...in business. And the Chief and I had discussed it. He came up with this ordinance. And yes, there's some issues in there that we can address to get it lined out. But it is a starting point. And really, not just the toy business. There's a lot of businesses, as far as contractors in the city, that kind of need to be looked at as far as insurance requirements and stuff like that, in my opinion. If you're going to operate a business in the city, you need to have data for insurance to operate your business.
Okay, any more changes or modifications that we're looking to on this particular ordinance? All right, we're going to move on into item C. Discuss window tent ordinance.
The window tent ordinance is just, it's simply a mirror of the state statute. We're dealing with tenting of vehicle windows. And so what we discussed with Jerry, and if we could incorporate that as a city ordinance, so that we can handle through city court in our city as opposed to through state court for window tenting.
Yeah, it mirrors the state statute.
When you don't state statute, they don't issue a permit anymore. They get away with a permit.
Yeah, that's, I just took state statute language. It's fleetly.
How are you going to, you want to buy equipment to measure the tent?
We have window tent meters now, so. How do we enforce this? I mean, will you go after the high school and just start down the cars? Or is this, when you pull somebody over, then you do that?
Well, yeah.
I wonder about that part of it. That's what I wonder.
A number of ways. We can do it during traffic stops. If you, I mean, get to where you recognize what 35%, 34%, or 35%, whatever the legal tent is.
Thirty-five.
It's pretty, it's pretty easy when you see a car going down the road with blacked-out windows that that's a violation. And this is all about officer safety. This is a safety hazard to our officers. These windows that you cannot see into. It's bad enough during the day, but at night it's even worse. You absolutely cannot see in these vehicles. Even if you walk up next to them, some of them are tinted so dark that when you shine your light in, you cannot see movement in the vehicle or who's in the vehicle. It's an officer safety problem, an officer safety issue, and that's why we're pushing to move this into, so that we can enforce it as a city ordinance, also indicate in the city court as opposed to put it in state court. And that's exactly why the state passed the state statute.
My only fear is the consistency of the ordinance.
This is like, this is like anything else. It's new to the officers. The officers haven't, haven't, even though it's been a state statute, they haven't been enforcing this stuff. And this is a training issue. This is about getting our officers on board, you know, dealing with these and enforcing this. I mean, I, my intention is not to go to the high school parking lot and start running the tent meter on windows. I mean, that's just, that's not what we're looking at doing.
You'd have to go out here in the police department parking lot, because there's a police officer vehicle with a dark tint on them over here. We'd have to visit him first. You've got to counsel the vehicle out here with a dark tint on it. You've got to do mine next.
We've got to do what we've got to do. So, you know.
That's how you can advise your right up front.
You will find most legitimate citizens know when a police officer, when he walks up to a vehicle, they're going to roll their window down. That's basically how I do it. I roll my window down and I keep my hands in clear view. So I'm not worried about it. You know, if you're not, you're not worried about it. I can't, I can't go for an ordinance when I'm doing exactly what the ordinance is against, so.
Court of marque. Court of marque.
It's a, it's a state law now.
Yeah, we can slate you anyway, so.
We're just trying to get it into city court.
And that's the thing I'm saying right there. If we're going to do it for John Doe, we've got to do it.
Me too.
What about the permit thing? Is there a way to get out of having to have to require the permit?
I was thinking the permit was for, if you had darker than 35, wasn't it?
Yes.
Like if you actually did have something wrong with your eyes.
Yeah, and most states, most states, there's an allowance for, if a doctor prescribed because of a skin condition or something like that, that they have to have. Yeah, there's an exception for that.
And again, that's a permit that's issued by the state of Missouri. It probably says they no longer issue those permits and that doesn't apply. Because it says permit which may be issued by Department of Public Safety of the state of Missouri. So if they no longer issue the permits, then that doesn't apply.
Anything else? Again, no action tonight on this particular ordinance. Okay, let's see. Discuss the number of officers assigned to graduation and other amendments. As relates to, I was just sitting up, council decided earlier that we were not going to have excessive security at a certain event that we've been providing for. But we need to define what's excessive with a clear number of extension.
Didn't, did we more or less conclude that we would provide two? But if they want 20, well, send 20, but they'll have everything over two.
And that's what we had discussed earlier.
Yeah.
With the county providing the dead piece and the highway patrol and us providing our two officers, I just don't see why we have to assume over half our police force out there.
So since the council, two officers would be, would be used for the graduation and don't charge anything extra? Any extra officers would be extra charged? Does that advise councils? Sense?
Yes. And if I may, I met with Superintendent Wilson, and we discussed this issue particularly and a couple of other things that we're working on with the school district. And he was, I related to him what the discussion was here, and he was, he felt good about that and he was fine with that.
Right. Okay. You got that in the minutes somewhere? The remittance was like that?
Will we still provide like one at the Gaines and stuff like that?
Oh, that's probably the other activities. That's up to you all to decide then.
Suppose now we pay for the school?
Yes. Yeah, our school is paying for those now.
Any other items on this particular subject? Or now we'll move into discuss establishing animal control committee. I guess this, you don't have to go on that, right?
No.
But that's where you're, it has to be brought up or fired. No? Okay. This is discuss.
That was in the minutes from last meeting. Freeation of Animal Control Committee. You know that.
While bringing ordinance back.
Well, I would need to do that.
That's up to you.
I mean, we have an animal control committee. It's part of the place. Yeah, I mean, we've got a list of committees. It's the police committee and animal control.
Okay, and that's up to you.
I'm fine with that.
I think it ought to be separated.
It's been separated in the past between the police department and animal control.
I mean, I don't have a problem with adding some people to it. But I don't know that it doesn't need to be under, would it be under, should it be under the police department? Are you talking about separating it out?
I would say separate it out.
But I mean.
Let animal control report for their committee and let the police department report for their committee.
But now the personnel will still go through the police department.
There'll be certain things that have to be coordinated, just like there are now.
Chief Payne would be the supervisor.
Dispatcher, whatever.
Well, it's a lot.
That's up to you all. If you want to have, if you want to make a motion, we'll keep it like it is and vote on if we can.
What's your thought on it?
You really want to know my thought on it?
Yeah.
My thought is that it's a separate budget right now. It needs to be either a separate department or that they answer directly to the police committee and be out from under the umbrella of the police department. It doesn't, it doesn't fit into what we do, what our role is. And certainly, it's a, it becomes a supervised reissue for us. And I think it would be better addressed and better handled outside the police department.
Doesn't she write citations and?
No, writes citations. They'd have to be in the police department.
Well, it doesn't have to, but, I mean, don't you think that gives her a little more authority? I mean, people see her.
Well, her authority comes.
She has the authority to oversee the animal control ordinance.
Yes.
And she needs the help of the police very frequently? Can you do that?
Not, no, it's not frequent. But we would still be there to assist her when she needs assistance. Most, most of everything that she does, she can do without the assistance of the, of the police officers. And in most cases.
So we're creating how different, how separate departments, basically?
Yeah. It's basically.
Is what you're asking?
It's already there, but it's, it's under the, huh?
I mean, how is it there when she does?
Separate department, he's just boss.
Yeah. If we split this off and be no different than the other departments, we still have the interaction between the departments. There's got to be cooperation and assistance on a need basis.
This reads.
That's no different than what we got today.
This reads police and animal control. And you know the police committee.
That's, that's the way it is.
Animal, don't animal control.
That's the way it is now.
Yeah.
But the proposal is to have a separate animal control committee.
And the whole sole purpose of the animal control committee is just to, to do what? What's, what's the purpose?
Just like Chief said, we can manage, manage what's happening at the humane department aside from police. I mean, they can spend their, better spend their time doing, you know, police work. And at the same time, allow humane officer to respond and react accordingly to animal situation. There, there's some serious conflicts between the two departments right now.
Between the police and the animal control department?
Correct. Yes.
Because?
I'm not, because it could involve disciplinary things, I'm not prepared to discuss it in open court.
But we'll create a separate department and change that?
I think so.
But you, you obviously don't want the animal control under the police, I think. Did I just say that?
I think, I think it could be more efficiently, be more efficient, more effectively handled in a different way.
So then would that take away your, let me just ask you this, because it was, I mean, I don't know if this is, I guess this is a common. Right before I left, I started getting calls, you know, about the same thing I talked to you about the other day. Chief Payne wants to kill the animals. Now, I'm just telling you.
Chief Payne does not want to kill the animals.
But you also even indicated to me that you felt like the ordinance said that after five days, they should be either immediately adopted or euthanized.
Oh, I didn't say, I didn't say immediately. I said, but the ordinance reads that after five days, then they need to do, take whatever action necessary to get the animals placed or adopted. Or, that's the way the ordinance reads. That's not Chief Payne, that's the ordinance.
But it doesn't say that they have to be. There's, there's no timeframe set in the ordinance that either has to be accomplished.
The big problem is, is that our space limitations and, and the requirements, we are required to operate under Department of Animal Control.
So are we out of compliance now?
Absolutely.
Are we out of compliance with the Department of Agriculture?
Well, not on, not on dogs. That's where that issue came up, on cats.
Well, that creates that.
Compliance there. And then there's other, there's other issues when they do their inspections about the condition of the facility and those kinds of things. Another thing I'd like to recommend also while we're having this discussion, if I beg, is that, that part-time, we, we have a full-time animal control officer and we have a part-time animal control officer. In order to provide seven days a week coverage, we really need to have two full-time animal control officers minimum. That way we could, you could schedule, you could stagger their schedules and, and have seven days a week covered. We get, we get lots of calls on the weekends, we get lots of calls at night. And so I would strongly encourage, considering that, even if, you know, even as we, as we put this part-time person in place as a remedy to some of the overtime issues we're trying to deal with, just because of the time requirements that just go out there and just clean, you know? And then the other, there is that the animal control officers were still, were still, you know, racking up the overtime hours. So maybe, I think a way to help alleviate that would be being able to have seven day a week coverage, and we could even, you know, look at staggering their hours so that we have more coverage in the evening time. I know I'm discussing with the animal control officer, one of her concerns was, is that she'll get calls after hours. We'll find out, is it, you know, it doesn't take long for people to figure out what hours the animal control officer are. Well, they get home after work and they let their dogs out and they let them run. And that, that has become a problem also. And that, that is what the animal control officer has related to me. So there's, there's some things that we can do to streamline the operation, make it more efficient and more effective. And I think that's the discussion we're having here tonight. It's, I think that's the important, the bottom line issue is, how do we make this more efficient and more effective? And to be able to address the needs that certainly is out there right now.
Well, I'm all for making it more efficient and more effective, but I'll tell you right now, we don't want to start killing the animals. I told you that before. And I, I think, maybe you're okay with it, but I kind of hear as men that wants that.
I've never said I, we're going to do that.
With this five-day thing, and you seem to kind of want to.
No, that's not, that's not what I've said.
Okay.
That's not what I've said.
Sorry.
It's the ordinance reads that. If you don't want that in the ordinance, then you need to take the euthanization out of the ordinance.
But it's not.
We have to, we have to operate under the ordinance. And so, never once, since I've been here as the chief, and I've had that discussion with TM numerous occasions, never ever have I indicated that I wanted to euthanize one animal. And I'm still at that line. Okay?
What the ordinance says is that it shall be placed for adoption or euthanized after five, because that, that after five days, the animal belongs to the city, and it shall be placed for adoption or euthanized. But it doesn't, there's no time limits or timeframe set that either the adoption has to take place or euthanization has to take place. It's just after five days, one of the two things will happen at some point. It doesn't require that it be euthanized after five days.
And if the council and the people in Pennant are happy with the way it's operating now, then maybe that's the direction we should go with.
I think one of the things that we're seeing is that it is a very emotional issue to a lot of people that really are pet lovers and animal lovers and all that. And I think one of the positive things, by taking this out of the police committee, forming its own separate committee, is we can get those issues resolved.
I think that's what should be done.
And so I'm going to make a motion that we go with a separate animal control committee.
Second motion.
But we'll still have supervision being the police department.
My recommendation to the committee.
That would be my recommendation, attach it to the committee. Take, take, take the controversy.
The biggest issue I see with that is council's not there for supervisory role. Council's there to give direction. They're not, they're not employees. Every employee needs a department head, that's why we have department heads. We don't need employees going to the council for supervision. I totally disagree with that.
Well, like the committee, they go to the committee now, the committee brings it back to the council. They go to the end of the road.
You can't do that with supervisory issue. You can do that with supervisory issue.
Council is not here to be a supervisor. That statute is not, is not the position of a council.
Has to remain upon.
We have to keep this order as it is. We can't go off and, I'm going to supervise one person of a street committee or a street partner.
Why not, why not, the humane officer becomes the supervisor?
Form its own department.
Make a separate department.
Well, that's up to you all, council, but I do not want to get to employees answering to council. You know, that's, we're going to get in a bigger mess that way. One of you council goes and talks to employee, then who's in charge anymore? You lose your office. Change of man.
Issue unfolding here. We'll act on that and what other discussion we're having here. If we enact the council, the committee, we'll be able to come back with how they propose to operate in future.
My motion is to form a committee for the animal.
Just for policy right now?
Yes.
Second.
What made for a policy? You guys said policy, come to the council and approve by council.
Yes, and then we'll deal with that supervision issue upon that.
So you're going to take it out from where it is now?
Yes.
Maybe just separate.
Okay, see?
Well, that'll be.
We'll look at it.
You got it.
We'll look at that.
Yeah, that's the, all I'm saying right now is let's form this committee for the animal.
For policymaking.
Yes, for policymaking, further discussion.
There's a motion, there's a second.
Second.
There's a second. Discussion on this motion.
Who will appoint the committee?
The mayor will appoint, as any other committee. Mayor would appoint, we'll, we'll, we'll count.
And so you'll dissolve the committee authority?
No, you'll all dissolve the committee.
We will amend, we'll amend the ordinance. Police and animal control committee, take out the animal control, but everything, we'll amend that ordinance at the same time.
That's why we look at law school.
Okay. Discuss, let's take our motion.
Do work forward, too.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, approval dismissed, regrouping July 16, 2013.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any changes, corrections, additions? All in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute. The article or the issue of listing funds, whatever, was that resolved?
I was hoping we'll address that later in the agenda. Would you have anything to change on that particular minutes?
I didn't see it under the agenda, so I'll just bring it up.
All right.
Bring it up, Ms. Wayne.
Yes, sir. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I look at participation. Anyone here tonight wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am. Ladies first.
I'm Mary Ann Wright, and I'm here today representing the unit Alliance for the Arts. And as you know, we put on the Florence Arts Festival, which the city has graciously helped us in this year, so we'll be seeing poster and even more ads out. Today, I am requesting for the festival, which is September 6th, 7th, and 8th, that we would have barriers in place in downtown around the courthouse to block that off for the event. We're requesting four areas of, for barriers. The first being College and First, the second, College and Cedar, the third, Tatum and Main, and the fourth, Main and St. Francis. This would block off all traffic on the west, north, and east side of the square. This year, we're requesting this is a little different than last year because the event is growing, we're adding more vendors, we need the space. And secondly, it really is a safety issue. On the east side of the square, we have the restrooms, the quarter potties are located there. We market this as a family event. We have children running around. It would be really convenient and we think necessary to block the traffic there. We, in the past, had barriers, but we would like to add to additional ones, so there won't be any traffic at all on the west and east side of the square.
Third, discussion.
We even purchased barriers just for the purpose, didn't we?
Yes, sir, we sure did.
So, any issues with that, chief, as far as that goes?
We just have to, we just have to coordinate it. I don't see any problems.
Right. You've got the control, don't you have the storage where all the barriers have been?
The chief, they were delivered to our place and putting a crater down there. I guess they're still there. I don't know.
There's some barriers at the old, old police station. Those are, those are blocked and mowed out. I just have to pick all that stuff up, yeah.
I think we can find the bears. If there's a motion from the council to.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I can go next.
Yes, sir.
Well, to thank you all for your support for Prince of Music's two events this summer, and I just wanted to tell you what we did this past Saturday. We had the Southeast Missouri Regional Jazz Orchestra, 17 players at Christian Church, 65 people in attendance. Worked out quite well, as usual. Back on July 2nd, the Connect Municipal Band played in Jones Park, and that was as successful an event as we've ever had. I think the weather helped, but we had about 250 people in the, in the area out in front of the bandstand. I would guess another 30 or more who live in front of there, plus kids and whatever wandering through. There was a great deal of traffic wandering through. I'm sure mostly thinking that they didn't know what was going on and were wondering what that was out there while those people were there. And that included a, an ice cream and popsicle truck and one man on a riding lawnmower. And so I'm guessing about 350 people altogether, counting the band, 39 members of the band. But that's important for us because the participation opportunity in the band is also very important for residents of our area. So I wanted to thank you, and I just wanted to tell you what we did, and we'll look forward to, maybe talk to you about something in the future, but we'll leave that for another time. But thank you, and that's what we did, and we're glad to have been able to do it and appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir.
And I guess I should also add that as far as the municipal band concert was concerned, once again, the park, department, work crew, Chuck Wheeler and his, his staff did an exceptional job making the park ready, the bandstand, everything around there ready for us. I'm not sure if they can do any much, much better than they did, no matter what. They've always been nice, very helpful, and they get the job done, and we're very grateful. So this is a nice cooperative effort from a lot of people, and we think it worked quite well for us.
It doesn't, it doesn't really get along with recognition, recognition, you know, the parks department. You're not here to.
They're not here to hear that, but they certainly do a good job for us every year and have for many years. And I know they do some other good things, and it's nice to be able to say thank you to them as well.
Yes, sir.
And when I say Chuck, I'm telling, but it's nice to be able to tell you. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming up with some forward. We seldom see that after an event like this, but of course, though.
Glad to be able to do it. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, large crowd. Anyone else tonight wish to speak to council? You're on the agenda. That's why. Okay, so I think we'll move into department reports. Anything from the department heads?
Just a couple of quick things. Hope most of you had an opportunity to spend just a minute and see the camera truck. It was out front. We're already finding it to be useful. Told you in an email, we've got a collapse on Third Street. That one block closed off over there. We've had a camera through there and we haven't been able to find the B culprit. We've found several culprits down through there. But also, we have a, no street collapse yet, but part of the shoulder's collapsed under the intersection of South Main and Leonard Younger, Third Street there on the southwest corner of Mitchell Park. We've got a large cavity under the turning radius there. We're working with City like this and we'll get some cooperation out of them tomorrow. We don't have a storm drain in that area, and we think it may be going, maybe to their sewer system. We're going to try to work with them tomorrow and see if we can put the camera down in there and try to figure out what's going on with it. So we've been trained on it, but we're still learning how to, you know, really operate it and stuff like that. Things you could see out here tonight, it was awfully bright. Camera works in total darkness with lights of its own, what makes it show up. So I thought the picture was still fairly clear out here tonight. So I thought the picture was still fairly clear out here tonight, if you got a chance to look at it. On the three intersections, Wiggs and Washington was completed before the weekend when the rains hit, they got all concrete poured. It'll be opened up this Friday, but they cure for seven days since it's such.